Well, I have as much time as needed. I would think it probably take me a half hour. For the presentation. For the whole thing. Okay, I'll tighten up my. I've been doing this thirty years. I know school boards are always badly behaved. As bad as city councils.
The study session of the independent school district five thirty-five school board is called to order at five thirty P M on Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and one thirty-seven of the Edison Building. The board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecal, a non-voting ex officio member and assistant school board clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Bolo. Dr. Cook.
Here.
Dr. Garcia.
Here.
Sergeant Blockland. Sergeant Marvin.
Here.
Sergeant Nathan.
Here.
Sergeant Woodman.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Item two point one is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Sorry, we need to do a roll call.
All right.
Sergeant Cook.
Aye.
Sergeant Garcia. Sergeant Marvin.
Aye.
Sergeant Nathan.
Aye.
Sergeant Woodman.
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. The agenda documents for this meeting are available online at Rochester schools dot org backslash assembly, and the meeting is being live streamed on YouTube dot com backslash I S D five thirty-five. The recording of the meeting will also be posted following completion of the meeting. Just a note for everybody watching and who's here at the meeting, we are going to take a recess for ten minutes after the first agenda item to allow reset for our second agenda item and give the superintendent a chance to talk to the media. Agenda item three is a prep for action referendum survey and proposal. Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. As board members are well aware, we have been eagerly awaiting some survey data that the Morris Leatherman has, company has conducted of a representative sample of Rochester citizens. We were so eagerly awaiting that, in fact, that the memo that I posted to our school board website today was held up until we had that data. And so we received it just days ago, and it has influenced the recommendation that I will be making to you after you have a chance to hear from Peter Leatherman. So it's wonderful to have Peter here, who leads the Morris Leatherman Company. Peter has been doing statistically and scientifically validated surveys like this for a long time, but he also brings a great understanding of the real world of schools and districts. So it's been wonderful to get to know him through this process. There are some interesting findings here, and so we will dig in first to this survey data and take that discussion as far as board members want to take it tonight, and then I will give you the recommendation regarding a referendum that was influenced by Peter's research. So Peter, welcome to Rochester, and thank you very much.
Super. It's always a pleasure to be back here to review with everybody what we undertook for the district. We spoke with six hundred twenty-five randomly selected residents across the district. The results of a six hundred twenty-five sample are projectable to plus or minus four percent in ninety-five out of a hundred cases. The margin of error is driven by the size of the sample, not the percent of the universe. So a six twenty-five in Rochester, a six twenty-five in Homestead County, or a six twenty-five in the state of Minnesota is plus or minus four percent. Continuing, average interview time was ten minutes. Non-response rate, we always try to keep that at under ten percent. Once they realized we weren't voter IDing them or trying to sell them anything, they were more than happy to talk. And like Superintendent mentioned, this really is hot off the presses. The field work was between April twenty-third and May sixth. I always like to start with some demographics so folks can understand the profile of what the sample represents. And the purpose of the demographics is twofold, not only to validate the sample versus updated census information, but then also we can look at differences between households with children, households without children, homeowners versus renters, those sorts of things. So cellphone-only households were fifty-four percent. Landline-only households, they still exist, are twelve percent of the sample, and then both cellphone and landlines are thirty-four percent. If we continue, how long has the respondent lived in the Rochester area public school district? Thirty-seven percent have been here for ten years or less, while thirty-nine percent have been in the district for twenty years or more. The typical resident has lived here just over fifteen years. Seventeen percent are, have a preschooler or an infant in the household. Twenty-nine percent have a child attending the Rochester School District, and sixty-eight percent are empty nesters. And once again, the caveat I always put, when people think empty nester, they think older retired folks. This simply is the lack of presence of a child. So we could have a twenty-three-year-old without a child. The purpose of this survey, that's an empty nester. So as you think about these results, three in ten are your key constituents, seven in ten are not your primary constituents in the sample. Continuing, just over twenty-five percent were renters. Self-assessed home value, this is obviously typically elevated simply because people self-assess a little higher than normal. And plus you have those that are above the four hundred thousand. It comes in right at about two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars as the median. Obviously, the community is very highly educated. Fifty-six percent are college graduates. That includes masters and doctorates and also all the other advanced degrees, while eighteen percent are high school graduates or less. Going back to what happened in twenty twenty-three, across the state, I'll speak to with only forty percent of referendums and levies passing. The number one issue in twenty twenty-three was the next question, and that was the macroeconomic condition of the household. This question asked was, we don't ask what their income is, we ask them to think about their income and their expenses. And is it being exceeded? Is it being met? Or are you actually behind in that calculation? Twenty twenty-three, by the summer and the fall, was the highest level of financially stressed that we've had in doing these, this question since two thousand eight, two thousand nine with the Great Recession. We got to fifty-eight percent of households across the state indicating they were financially stressed. To give you idea, back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, it got to sixty-five percent. And so what we have seen, though, now in the first quarter of twenty-four is it has started to alleviate the financially stressed number. We're down now, the norm across the state is forty-five percent. So you're a little bit below the norm at forty-one percent. The key thing to remember, though, was back in the Helsian days of twenty nineteen before the pandemic, the financially stressed number was about twenty-six or twenty-seven percent. Okay? So we're still substantially higher. The key to that number, especially with funding requests, is the higher that number goes, the more folks you have that would support something they can't afford to. It's not a decision against the district, it's a decision with their pocketbook. It's just not an option. So at the first quarter of twenty-four right now, it's getting better. Where we are in November of twenty twenty-four will be anybody's guess. The geographic distribution, you can see it arrayed between the six wards and then the townships. And then finally, on the demographics, twenty-six percent indicated they were eighteen- to thirty-four-year-olds, while forty percent are over the age of fifty-five. A typical resident in the school district is about forty-seven years old. Women outnumbered men by four percent, and Democrats outnumbered Republicans by fifteen percent in the district, with nineteen percent classifying themselves as independents. On the overall quality of education in the district, we have eighty-one percent rating the district favorably, sixteen percent rating it unfavorably. Right now, the norm for the favorable is between eighty and eighty-five percent. It's come down with the pandemic and concerns on learning loss and proficiency. What also has come down is the excellent rating. Before the pandemic, the norm was twenty-two percent. We're down to a norm of about ten percent. The excellent rating, it's always difficult to get Minnesotans to be enthusiastic about things, and oftentimes, it's always fun when you follow up with the good and say, how can you become excellent? And about a third of them will say, you can't. Good is good enough. It's just kind of the Minnesota ethos. So that seventeen percent excellent, it's about fifty percent higher than the norm right now that we're seeing. So this, this trend falls right in place with, with we're seeing over the last eighteen months. What do folks like most about the Rochester Public Schools? Twenty-three percent point to good teachers, but if we combine variety of programming and broad curriculum, you have twenty-six percent that are pointing to what's being taught in the classroom, the curriculum or programs. And then if we combine good academics, excellent academics, and high test scores, we have twenty-two percent reacting to the education quality. So basically, you're a statistical tie with the primary three pillars on this question, the personnel side, the program side, and the quality side. This varies across the state. Some districts are very, very enamored with the teachers, some with the programming, some with the quality. Yours, it's basically a statistical tie between the three on what they value most. What's the most serious issue facing the district? On this one, the first thing we look at is, do you have anything that hits twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five percent? Where you have one in four or one in three people coalescing around one response. That's a significant concern in the district. You do not have that. You do have four items that hit double five, that hit almost double digits. What leads the list is lack of funding. That's pretty consistent between fifteen and twenty percent across the state right now, and we'll go a little more in depth on that in a little bit with a question later in the survey. Fifteen percent poor spending, that ties into budget cut discussions. Fourteen percent large class sizes, that varies all over the state, and it depends on the person's experience growing up with how they react to class sizes. Drugs and alcohol at ten, nine percent lack of discipline, declining quality at six, and attracting and retaining teachers at two. The one thing that is actually not on the list I will point to, we will look at it more in depth in a few charts, high property taxes is only one percent. And what we've seen is, combined with the macroeconomic situation in twenty twenty-three, property tax hostility increased across the state in twenty twenty-three. And a most, and an open-ended question such as this, the typical is somewhere around fifteen percent pointing to property taxes as the most serious issue facing the district. You don't have that as a top-of-the-mind response. We will see it come up in a few slides, though. And then I would point down to the bottom, the thirteen percent nothing. Those folks are boosters. There are no problems in the Rochester area public schools, and they're consistent throughout in their ratings on financial management, administration, governance, communication, support for a potential referendum package. They're different than unsure. They say there are no problems here. The pandemic, before the pandemic, the norm on that was ten percent. We're now down to about five percent booster core across the state. So relatively speaking, but you have about one in eight folks that are boosters. It really is a reservoir of goodwill out there. That's two to three times the typical district right now across Minnesota. A few specific perceptions that we test in districts. First off, does the district spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? Sixty-seven percent agree with that statement. That's just, just short of ten percent higher than the norm. Are they satisfied with decision-making in the district? Seventy-one, twenty-four. Just a little bit above the norm. This has yo-yoed all over the place with decisions districts have had to make over the past four years coming out of the pandemic, but you've landed in a relatively good place at a three-to-one ratio. Do they trust you to do what's right for the children? Seventy-eight to eighteen, relatively strong to the norm. Does the district do a good job of involving the community? This is right at the norm, and the norm has dropped from the pandemic because it became difficult to involve the community when they're meeting on Zoom and those sorts of things, and it has not recovered back to the seventy-five, eighty percent that we used to see. Is the district honest about spending? Yes, sixty-eight, twenty-five. And then finally, the last question is, the schools are a good investment, and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. To me, it's one of the critical questions in the survey because this taps into core opposition. I'm most curious on the disagreement on this question because we don't say what the funding would be used for. We just simply, if they disagree with this statement, they do not believe that this support a property tax increase. That thirty percent is right at the threshold that we want it to be. We don't want it to go to thirty-five or forty percent that in concept are core opponents from the outset. It means the community is willing to have a discussion around a potential funding increase. Job performance ratings, the school board and administration basically mirror each other. And the, the norm board rating right now is fifty-five, forty. The norm administration superintendent rating is two to one. So the board and then the administration are a little bit above the norm on this. And what we see also is the board and the administration, the community sees the governance and the administration as one. You can always tell if there's issues in the district if the board is here and the administration is here, or vice versa, that there's a disconnect. The community senses that tension. That's not the case here. And then finally, when you get closer to the children, ratings tend to go up, and they do in this case, just above the norm. The norm is typically right now between eighty and eighty-five percent. Teachers are eighty-six to ten. Overall assessment, then, of financial management, fifty-five percent say excellent or good, forty percent say only fair or poor, five percent are unsure. Norm on this is flat fifty percent. And when we combine back and look at the questions on spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently, the honesty about spending, the red, the district overall has a majority of, of trust on financial stewardship issues in the minds of residents in the community. Property taxes, I alluded to it being missing from the list as a most serious issue, and that's a top-of-the-mind response, but it is still an underlying issue. Fifty-six percent rate the property taxes is very high or somewhat high. The threshold we use on this is fifty percent to be considered a hostile tax climate. Now, before twenty-two, the norm was about forty-five percent. What happened in twenty twenty-two is people got their assessments in the spring and saw their property was worth twenty, twenty-five percent more, and they were thrilled. Only about four percent of those people figured out that that would impor, impact their property tax statements in November. And what happened is what was a norm of forty-five percent high jumped to almost sixty percent high in twenty twenty-three. And that was an issue across the state for funding requests for school districts. The good news is, do they blame the school district? No, they don't blame the school district because we could see the fifty-two percent high goes down to forty-seven percent high. That's the good, that's the good news. The bad news is you're really the only show in town that has to go to the public for a funding request. The other entities do not have to. This question, in light of last year's legislative action, is surprising and pretty, it has been consistent in twenty-four and still surprises me. Because what happened in twenty twenty-one with Governor Walz's pronouncement on the largest increase in education funding in the history of Minnesota caused the yes on this question to go to seventy-five percent that they believe their district was adequately funded. That did not come to fruition coming out of the twenty twenty-three biennial budget. And so you do have a majority of folks indicating that, no, the Rochester area public school district is not adequately funded. We're typically seeing this between a forty-five, forty-five split or a, or a forty, sixty, kind of in your area. We do not have very many districts in light of everything that's happened since last May being at a majority unlike what we saw in twenty-one and twenty-two. If the district put forward a referendum request for a property tax increase, would the person be against all? Would they be for all, or are they for some and against others? You start out at a plus two, meaning you have two percent more core support than core opposition. In twenty twenty-three, of the districts that were successful, the norm was a negative three, that they had three percent more opposition than support at the outset. So it's a good position, a good starting position, but the key is obviously going to be the fifty-one percent persuadable. And you follow the trend that, that we see over the past ten years is you have half the people that have made up their mind with no information. Because we haven't told them if it's a bond referendum or an operating levy, we haven't told them if it's five bucks a month or five bucks a year. They're either for it or against it, no matter what. This is my thirtieth year of doing this. In the nineties, we would have seventy-five to eighty percent persuadable. And where about one in five, one in four would have their mind made up. Now, it's kind of the state we are in as a country with half the people made up their mind with really no information at this point in time. Our let's make a deal question. At this one, we flesh out the Minnesota nice because, yes, we had twenty-three percent that said they're against all. We asked for a dollar amount, and then they have to admit, okay, nothing. It's very typical. Typically, it's five to eighty percent. The key on that, though, is that nothing is under thirty-five percent. That's really the threshold we're looking at. You have twenty-nine percent saying nothing. So you could see it's been a pretty consistent, about thirty percent is the core opposition. And that's a critical piece, and you can, that also means that in an off-year election, they have much more influence than in a, even your election where turnout is higher. If we look, though, at the comfort level of those supporting a property tax increase, we have twenty-one percent at eight dollars a month, twenty percent at sixteen dollars a month, and eighteen percent at six, or twenty-four dollars or more. The typical resident, let's just mark it at fifteen dollars a month, if they're willing to accept a property tax increase. Now, boards and administrations always ask me, is that number set in stone? It is not set in stone. There's, there can be elasticity to that number. There can also be retraction from that number. It depends on what's being asked for, which is why we go to the next chart, and we went through seven items and asked in concept, do you support a property tax increase for this purpose? You have high support for everything we tested. First off, we don't have anything that has a majority in opposition that we would consider a red flag. You do have a sense of hierarchy of, or priority here from the list, but overall, with a plus or minus of four percent, it's basically a statistical tie. If we look at the numbers straight up, though, maintaining academic programs, seventy-two percent. The specifics on the pay and benefits was increased paying benefits to attack, attract and retain teachers and other school staff, seventy percent. Maintain class sizes, sixty-nine percent. Enhance mental health services, sixty-five. Provide financial stability to avoid future budget cuts, sixty-five. This one is enhance college and career planning and counseling at the high schools, sixty-four percent, and enhancing career and technical education opportunities for students at sixty-four percent. When I see this, I know that there's going to be a higher tax, there's going to be a higher level of support for a dollar amount for taxes coming out of that fifteen. This pulls that number up. This provides the elasticity. How much elasticity? Quite a bit, I think, and it's coming into play in light of the failed levy last year, in light of the discussion of budget cuts all coming into play. What we tested was a twelve hundred and eighty-four dollar per pupil unit operating levy. We told folks that it would generate an additional twenty-two million, and if the additional funds were approved, they would be used to provide financial stability and fund some of the improvements that we just went through in the previous questions. They were told the owner of a three hundred thousand dollar home would see a property tax increase of twenty-eight dollars a month, and an owner of a four hundred thousand dollar home would see a property tax increase of thirty-seven dollars a month. So if you want to take the midpoint at three fifty, it's about thirty-two dollars a month. We're basically testing double what the tolerance was. But because there's such high support for everything being discussed, we have sixty-three percent support to thirty-four percent opposed. So with the dollar amounts in place, knowing you have a core opposition of thirty percent, you only lost four or five percent based on the dollar amount. Is there a lot of intensity? Not at this point. We only have thirty-three percent feeling strongly one way or the other, almost two to one in favor of strong support versus strong opposition. This is pretty typical, though, this early in the, you haven't had a campaign on this. That tends to intensify support or intensify opposition. What's the reason for their position on the levy? Twenty-six percent say it's because education's important. Fifteen percent, they have children in the school district. Thirteen percent say it's needed, and ten percent say the cost is reasonable. On the flip side, what's the reason for opposition? Eleven percent poor district spending. Seventeen percent are making a cal, cost calculation. Either their taxes are currently too high or the cost of the request is too high. Five percent indicate they have no children. Only one percent say not needed. I always put the not needed in here, but even if it's a one percent, because I always want to look at those that are making the value transit, transaction on this, need versus not need, it's thirteen to one in favor at this point in time. Now, the one thing that's critical, as you move forward on this, what leads to successful referendums is the need being the number one issue on election day. What drives people to vote, what drives people to support is they understand that there's something at play, that there's logical consequences. This is important. And that, though, manifests itself over the course of a campaign where there's discussion in the community about what these funds will be used for and what will happen if the funds don't get approved. Now that we have a neutral question on the levy, we test some messaging for and against, just to understand how the messaging coming out from both sides will play into the voters' minds. So we tested six arguments and, or seven arguments in support. The number, the, the top, they kind of all operate in a vacuum chamber. There's not a lot of movement, one way or the other. It might impact intensity. But the providing, I'll just go through and quickly read each of these so you know the context. The first one is, with additional revenue, the district will have more stable funding and be able to maintain class sizes and provide consistent programs for students. That's a clear theme that we saw earlier on when we're talking about the use of the funding, the maintenance and the stability portion of the argument. In second place is, for the past two decades, state funding has not kept pace with inflation, creating a twenty-five million dollar gap in the district's annual budget. Next, without additional funding, the district will have to close some schools and take, change attendance boundaries for students. The next one, new mandates from the state legislature will impact. The next one, new mandates from the state legislature will impact employee wages, insurance, and other benefits, which may cost districts more money than the additional funding they receive from the state. Next is the special education question, and that is with, required special education programs continue to cost the district fifteen million dollars more than it receives each year from state and federal government, putting additional pressure, pressure on the district's operating budget. The comparison to the neighbors, this one motivates supporters, it doesn't change opponents' minds. There are a few districts on the western side of the metro area that it plays really well to, but the rest of the state basically says, they do their thing, we do our thing. But the argument is Rochester Public Schools has the lowest voter-approved operating levy among Minnesota school districts. This results in less funding to support school operations, classroom materials, and teachers and support staff. And then finally, what you've already done, the district will cut twenty million dollars from its budget over the past two years, and the next few years, the district will need to cut an additional nineteen and a half million. All of them are effective arguments, but there's, you're going to see there's not a lot of shift on them. What about arguments and opposition? And this one, I won't read the specific ones, they're pretty self-explanatory, and they're the same issues that played into the, the referendums that we saw in twenty-twenty-three. And that's with inflation and the cost of living. That macro issue combined with local property taxes impacted referendum and levies. The other two is the, the districts just need to do a better job of spending, and the state legislature increased funding last year, so everything should be fine. But you already saw that earlier, that, that has not changed people's perception that the districts are adequately funded. So when we pull it all together, is there significant change? No, there rarely is significant change. But what we're looking for, is there a drop? And hearing the arguments, do all of a sudden some people say, um, no, I don't, I think maybe I would oppose. We start out at sixty-three percent, we end up at sixty-four percent. So basically, all the arguments pro or con really kind of wash, and they really kind of operate within their own echo chambers of support and opposition. Finally, a couple of questions. Where are folks getting their information? First off, mailings lead the list with the website, word of mouth, alive and lush in the school district. It continues to grow. There are many districts where word of mouth now is the number one source of information, especially as local newspapers do not cover districts like they used to. The local newspaper is at eleven percent. Surprisingly, you do have eight percent indicating social media is their primary source of information. This is really something unique in the last couple of years because three to five years ago, people did not want to admit that social media was their primary source of information. And now we have more and more people, it's, it's getting higher, we're approaching double digits in some districts. So maybe something's changed, that it's, it's not the scarlet A of perhaps admitting that you are relying on social media. Emails, mailings, and district staff. And then finally, how do folks prefer to receive this, their information? On this one, I always tell clients, you need to look at this just simply, do they want to hold something in their hand? Mail, newsletter, and local newspaper, you have forty-six percent that want to hold something in their hand. On the flip side, do they want to push a button on their phone or their computer? Seventeen percent, website, email at twenty-three, social media at ten, e-newsletter at five percent. So we have forty-five percent indicating they want to push a button. It's basically, they're very distinctive demographics on who's relying on those, but you have to do both effectively. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
So I, I, since we stopped on this slide, that was one of the things that jumped out to me, it was the thirty percent interested in receiving information in some kind of physical mail newsletter. Could you elaborate on what demographics are most strongly associated with that type of preference?
Over fifty-five-year-olds. It's, it's, it's very specific, and it goes to the, the hope that to go all electronic leaves behind the, the older demographic. There's no need for them to go to the website on a daily basis to gather news. And when local newspapers don't, like, like, especially some are closing all across, around the state, as they disappear, the new group I mentioned, the growth in the, of the grapevine is over fifty-five-year-olds. Now, they just go to restaurants for breakfast. And they've become the new, the traditional grapevine in a school district was young parents around ECFE and youth sports. That was kind of the nexus of the grapevine. We now have this additional grapevine because this void has been left, they don't, they're not on social media. Unless there's major issues, they're not going to go to the website. And so it's really kind of this void that's been created.
Peter, you mentioned that, that on the whole, in Rochester, you did not find people associate the school district with a high tax burden, but that there was a perception of a high tax burden. So presumably, we could extrapolate that maybe they think that burden's coming from other government entities, maybe we don't know. Is that a familiar tension you've seen with districts where, because of course, the fact that this board needs to go out to the voters to generate funding for what I think many think are now core operations, they're not extras, is a big difference from their colleagues at the city council or the county commission. And yet, that was one of several things in your research that jumped out at me, is that dichotomy between not so much the school district, but there's a tax pressure that people feel in the community.
Correct. It, it is, the, the tension, there, there are some districts where, when we ask your perception of total taxes and your perception of school taxes, where school taxes actually higher than the total taxes. So then you understand that the animus is towards the school district. I always joke that when I started this and, doing this in nineteen ninety-four, we used to ask, who do you blame if you think your taxes are high? To be honest, cities and counties were not happy with us. So we came up with this method to understand, because at the end of the day, I don't care who they blame, I want to know who they blame, so to understand what the school taxes. So yes, it, more times than not, the, the blame is not at the feet of the school district. Most residents realize that their levy is going to go up from the city or county, basically regardless of whether they have the opportunity to vote. And they understand that, and that's, that, that has a draw, but be that as it may, the legislature hasn't changed anything about that.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Chair Nathan and Board members, I'm going to do something here that I haven't done. I think I've done one other time since I've been in Rochester, so it's actually, I'm going to read something to you. I'm going to do it partly because of the seriousness of this situation, but also because I know you got this memo at the end of the afternoon today, and that was related to the fact that we were waiting, as I mentioned earlier, for Peter's research, which largely confirmed the thinking that I've been doing over many months and that a number of others around this table have been doing with me. And so to jump in, we need to begin with what's at stake for where we are in Rochester Public Schools. Rochester Public Schools is at a crossroads. Over the course of my first two years in Rochester as superintendent, we cut more than twenty million dollars from the school district's general fund, resulting in the elimination of more than a hundred and fifty valuable staff positions. Following the narrow failure of the capital projects levy in November of twenty-twenty-three, we were forced to announce the closure of multiple schools and major reductions in programs and services for students. Now fortunately, as you all know well, Mayo Clinic stepped in with a donation of ten million dollars, and you authorized the use of our budget reserve. And so we have been enabled this year to avoid making major reductions for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Unfortunately, neither funding for Mayo Clinic nor use of reserve funds can be used to balance the district's budget for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year and beyond. The projected budget deficits that Rochester Public Schools and other school districts face in the years ahead are the result of many factors, the most important of which is the fact that funding from the state of Minnesota and the federal government have not kept up with the real rate of inflation that all organizations face in today's economy. The chart in the memo that I shared with you and that is available on the school district's website shows the gap between the funding that school districts in Minnesota have received from the state's general fund and the funding those school districts would have received if state funding had kept pace with inflation. So as a result of the shortfall in state funding and other factors, school districts across Minnesota have been forced to turn to their local communities to secure funding for programs that many community members consider indispensable. When the amount of voter-approved funding that Rochester Public Schools receives from its local community is compared to the funding that other school districts that serve more than ten thousand students receive, Rochester ranks last. In order to continue to offer the high caliber of education that the citizens of Rochester rightly expect of their schools, it is essential to increase the amount of funding that Rochester Public Schools receives from its community. If the district does not receive that additional support, we will be required to cut at least twenty million dollars from the district budget, starting with the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Given that the school district has already cut more than twenty million dollars since I began my tenure as superintendent, we are past cutting through muscle and would face no choice but to get, cut deeply into the bones of our school system. As the Rochester community painfully learned following the narrow failure of the technology referendum that was on the ballot in November twenty-twenty-three, and before Mayo Clinic stepped up with its transformative donation, cutting into bone means taking drastic steps such as closing schools, raising class sizes, eliminating staff positions, and reducing critical supports for students. Rochester Public Schools will also be forced to reduce or eliminate many of the special programs that make our district unique if we do not secure additional funding from our local community, from opportunities to study science out in nature, and technical education programs that prepare students for jobs in the construction trades, nursing, information technology, and auto mechanics. Still further, we will be unable to sustain some of the most promising new initiatives that have been launched over the past two years as part of the Rochester Public Schools' strategic plan. Those initiatives include raising the reading skills of all students from early childhood through high school, and ensuring that every student has a plan for success in post-secondary education and a career. So what am I proposing? In order to avoid closing schools and raising class sizes and to preserve what is best about Rochester Public Schools, I recommend that the Rochester School Board place an operating referendum on the ballot in November of twenty-twenty-four that would generate an estimated net increase in total revenue for the school district of nineteen million four hundred and one thousand ninety-seven dollars. If placed on the ballot and approved by the voters, the referendum would generate additional revenue of one thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars per pupil unit, starting with the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year and continuing for the next ten school years. I also recommend that the referendum include a provision that would increase funding at the rate of inflation as determined by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics and allowed under Minnesota law. Preliminary information on the impact that passage of this referendum would have on property owners in Rochester is outlined in a report included with my memo to you tonight. That report was prepared by our school district's financial advisor, Aylers, Inc., and should be seen as preliminary at this stage of the school board's deliberation. Some changes in information provided on the report may need to be made based upon the final results of the twenty-twenty-four legislative session and tax assessments. Now, some in the community may ask why I recommend that the operating levy be set at nineteen-point-four million, while the referendum that RPS placed on the ballot in the fall of twenty-twenty-three was set at ten-point-one million. The difference in the amount of funding that I recommend RPS seek this year and the amount the district sought last year is based upon differences in the two types of referendums. Last year, the district sought funding to support use of technology in our schools through a capital projects levy. Because a capital projects levy can only be used to support the purchase of equipment and material, the school district could only request the amount of funding it needed for those limited purposes. In contrast, an operating levy can be used to support a much wider range of programs and positions and purposes. As such, I recommend that the district set the operating levy at the amount that the district needs to achieve significant financial stability. Approval of an operating levy in an amount of nineteen-point-four million dollars would constitute a quantum leap toward achieving that objective. Because I believe that the public deserves to know precisely how its resources would be spent, the funding from the operating referendum would be allocated toward the specific positions and programs that I outline in my memo to you tonight. While shifts in laws and changes in student needs and other factors might require changes in this list over the course of the ten-year period that the referendum funding would be in place, those changes would be clearly identified and explained to the community. The school district would release an annual report outlining the ways that referendum funds are used each year, and the impact that those funds have on the character and quality of the education that students receive. Taken together, the positions and programs that would be supported through this operating referendum engage students in educational experiences that ignite their love of learning and that provide critical support for student well-being. The positions and programs that are listed in my memo are listed in descending order of their projected cost in the district's twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget. Estimated costs were calculated by taking the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four revised budget for the current year and adding eight percent to project expenses during the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, the first year that this new referendum would apply. The informational outreach that we would conduct to inform citizens about the referendum, if you vote to place one on the ballot, will describe the programs and positions in much greater detail, and will explain the ways they are connected to each other and to the broader mission of Rochester Public Schools. So what are the positions and programs that would receive support from this referendum under my proposal? And I'll just briefly touch on the programs and positions, and the amounts of funding, again, projected for the first year of the, the referendum are listed in the memo that's available on our website. The first are school counselor positions in our elementary, middle, and high schools. The second are industrial technology and career and technical education classes, which include accounting, auto mechanics, business education, cabinetry and advanced woodworking, construction trades, housing and interior design, marketing and management, personal finance and investing, small business strategies and work experience, all fields that are urgently needed here in this growing economy and community of Rochester. Next are advanced learning positions and services, formerly known as gifted and talented specialists positions and services in our school district. After that is our CTEC, career and technical education programming, which also touches on fields that are urgently needed in our community, from agriculture to computer science and information technology, engineering, health science, hospitality, law enforcement, manufacturing, and of course, teaching. Next comes media specialists in our elementary schools, a support that many school districts have long since eliminated and that this referendum would help us maintain. Then is funding for integrating deeper learning into all of our academic subjects, which is essential because this year and next year, we are supporting that work through a one-point-two million-dollar grant from a private foundation. Next comes Project Lead the Way, a wonderful program that prepares students for careers in engineering and problem solving, and we would focus that funding on Project Lead the Way at the middle school level. Then comes our PTEC partnership with Rochester Community and Technical College, Mayo Clinic, and IBM, where we have students, starting in high school and proceeding through higher education, to earn credentials and degrees in nursing and information technology. Moving on, we would also allocate support to our community schools coordinator positions, critical positions that coordinate support for students and families that are facing additional hurdles and challenges, in particular, helping them secure housing, food, clothing, and other sources of critical support, without which we know our students face a huge challenge in focusing on school. We would then add support for our middle school music programs, which, over the past several years, I've come to believe, need that additional support to adequately introduce all students to band and orchestra and instrumental music, which actually, of course, as we know, has educational benefits, even if the students don't ultimately go on to become musicians. Continuing on, we would support reading specialists and curriculum to further and sustain, over the course of a decade, the transformative work we've begun to implement the science of reading from early childhood to high school. We would allocate support to assist our launching emerging adults program, our LEAP program, which helps students who face some extraordinary challenges stay on track to school and begin to take steps toward careers and jobs, and especially life skills, that I think we know they wouldn't master at the same level or maybe at all, without the kind of intensive support they get at LEAP. And then there's Project Search, where we have some of our students with disabilities who participate in a really extraordinary in- at the same level or maybe at all without the kind of intensive support they get at LEAP. And then there's Project Search, where we have some of our students with disabilities who participate in a really extraordinary internship at Mayo Clinic and whose presentation to the school board every year has become a highlight of your annual calendar. We would ensure our support for the Rochester Public Schools staff who provide interactive science education, both at the Quarry Hill Nature Center and in our schools, engaging kids outside and inside the classroom in understanding the natural world. We would provide sustained funding for the initiative that we have launched with our strategic plan to ensure that all students have solid plans for post-secondary education and a career, an example of a resource that was support, that is supported by that work, as Will Ruffin and Heather Hogan and Alex Agano shared with you the other day, is our new Zello software that is really taking off among our students, helping them both develop their identities and their career plans. We would also dedicate sustained support to our new parent education program, the CAPE program, which really is focusing, in particular, on parents who we really need to help understand the educational system in this country and how to support their students in succeeding in school and preparing for post-secondary education. There are a few new positions, and I think the fact that we're including single positions in a $19.4 million referendum proposal, I hope shows how carefully we are watching the bottom line of the school district, because we are literally keeping track of every single position that we add. And so we would be asking for support, first of all, for a position to coordinate the submission of grants to the state and federal governments and private foundations. Since I've been here, we have greatly increased that. We've brought in millions of dollars, but I'll tell you, board members, we are leaving money on the table, because it takes people to coordinate the submission of grants, especially the seven-figure grants to the federal government, the National Science Foundation, other foundations that I believe we're competitive for, but that take months to prepare and secure. We also would add a position to coordinate donations from area businesses and individuals to support the work that we do in the district, in particular, in arts and athletics. I have had, again and again, people in our business community, people in our parent community, say, "I'd like to write a check to support this team, this field, this arts program, this robotics program, but I don't exactly..." You need to make that easy for me. And so we'd have a position to coordinate that work as well. And then finally, even though we have a major need in our community to enhance and expand our career and technical education programs, and we have some wonderful ones, we don't have anybody who wakes up full-time and sees career and technical education as their job. Adding a full-time lead school counselor has been a quantum leap in our work preparing students for success in post-secondary education. We need the same kind of coordination in preparing kids to go directly into the workplace. We are one of the districts in the state that continues to operate a wonderful planetarium at Mayo High School, which is really a rite of passage for many Rochester Public Schools students. I know when I was in St. Paul schools, the planetarium we had in Como Park High School, every year was a potential budget cut. And I'm pleased to say that district has maintained its support for the planetarium, and I would recommend that we do the same with this referendum here in Rochester. The Post Bulletin today has a superb story, totally by coincidence, on the driver's education program that we started for low-income students shortly after I got to Rochester. That has been funded by the federal COVID funding and other sources that is ending next year. And so we would sustain that support for students who otherwise might not be able to complete driver education at all as high school students. And we know in Rochester, because of the limited availability of public transit, having a car opens the door not just to employment and extracurriculars, but to also helping with family responsibilities. And then finally, a relatively modest amount of money, but a critical addition, we would have sustained funding for the mental health screeners that we have piloted this year, helping to identify students who are struggling with anxiety, depression, and even more serious mental health challenges. So, board members, those are the specific people, programs, purposes that I would recommend we dedicate. And then finally, I'll just conclude, as I do in the memo, by saying that over the past three years, we've engaged thousands of students, staff, parents and caregivers, and citizens of Rochester in discussion about the future of our schools and our city. That conversation began with the development of the Rochester Public Schools' strategic plan during the 2021-2022 school year. Through that effort, we decided that it was time to raise the bar and institute a systemic strategy to help every student recognize and realize their purpose in school and in life. The conversation continued through the referendum that narrowly failed in November of 2023, and I hope and believe it will have a positive conclusion during the referendum that I recommend you place on the ballot in November of 2024. I look forward to discussing this proposal with you now and in the days ahead, and to your vote on my recommendation at the next regular meeting of the Rochester School Board on May 21st. And with that, Madam Chair, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board members, would anybody like to ask questions or lead a discussion? Director Murk.
Wow, this is very thorough. I absolutely appreciate that. Clearly, if the board votes to go ahead with this and it passes, that would put Rochester still just in the middle of spending that we're seeing in other similar-sized school districts. And, you know, I am taken by the specificity that's included here, because I think it really highlights that this school district isn't just focused on helping kids become good test takers and having great academic skills, which is clearly something we want to do. But all of this combined shows the commitment to helping students become great people and be prepared for the world that they will graduate into, that they'll know about the workplace, they'll know about post-secondary education, that we care about their mental health. It's really the whole-child approach. We don't see them as interchangeable widgets, but unique individuals who deserve the best that our community, our entire community, can provide for them. And I think, to me, this makes perfect sense, and it's an excellent description in this form of what we value. So, thank you.
Director Orkin. I've been thinking about how to phrase this question. How many of these programs are currently being funded with COVID dollars? That's number one. And I mean, I know that a lot of our school counselor positions have been funded with COVID dollars. The second question would be, how many of these are additions to what we already have? For example, the middle school music positions and support, that's additional money for a program that we already have. And a third example on the Quarry Hill Nature Center, is that number the amount that we are spending now to sustain that program? Or is there additional funding for that? I mean, excluding any inflationary factors? Those are just a few examples.
Yeah, thank you, Director Workman. I'd be pleased to actually, in support of the meeting next week, break this down for you with specificity. But the vast majority of programs and positions here are ones that exist currently. This is not a massive increase in funding for expansion of people or programs in Rochester Public Schools. It is preserving both the core and many very valuable longstanding programs. And to your point, it is recognizing the fact that the end of the federal COVID funding is a gigantic factor in our school district. And so in the proposal I've submitted, all of our counselors are currently being funded by that source. And so that is a major source that we obviously need to pick up from another source. It was an appropriate use of COVID funding because they played an indispensable role in supporting kids through the pandemic. In addition, Director Workman, all of the things in here that are tied to our strategic plan, like the post-secondary work, like the family engagement work, have been, are supported by federal COVID dollars. And as I mentioned, the deeper learning work has been supported by private foundation. And so the vast majority of these are existing expenses that, should we have to cut $20 million starting in the next school year, it would be very hard to preserve. Now, it's very clear to say, everything on this list would not be necessarily on the cut list if the referendum does not pass. I mentioned that school closures and class size increases and other cuts would certainly be at play with that. But you do quickly pick out some of the limited strategic new investments. There would be, I think, a meaningful but modest increase support for middle school music. There would be several new positions to fill those gaps that I mentioned, with nobody waking up every day and saying, "Career and technical education coordination is my full-time job." But the vast majority of these are expenses that currently exist. And it's a very important point, because after cutting more than 150 positions, were we to advance a referendum proposal that took us way back to an unsustainable level of staffing, it would be short-sighted, and that is not what's at the core of this proposal.
May I ask sort of a follow-up? Okay, so on the new positions to coordinate the submission of grants and the one for the donations from individuals, I see a figure there. Does that figure, will that figure include everything that they need? And I'll give you a very specific example. A number of years ago, several years ago, the board voted to create a new cabinet position. But we only included the amount for the executive director with absolutely no money to support that. So are you anticipating that there will be a need for more money that's listed here? I just don't want us to make the same mistake again, where we think, okay, this is great, but...
Right. No, these are, these are, these would be valuable. These are not what we might call high-level positions. These would not be, these would be at the coordinator level, presumably. So there are folks who are hardworking, don't have admin support generally, and things like that. So they are people that would be very much, which I think, in many ways, the work of our district rests on people like this. They're the people who make the trains run on time, who get the work done. So they would be three strategic positions at that level. And so, yes, those costs are basically salary benefit for those positions, which, if we don't secure funding from a referendum, given our financial situation, I would not recommend adding. Despite the fact that, as I said, I think, I know, because I've spent 20 years doing it, we're leaving money on the table in grants we could be bringing in to support the work, but those don't right themselves.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly see that that's a huge advantage in that these positions will very likely be made up with all the additional funding that hopefully we'll be getting from grants and individual benefactors.
Director Cook.
So what I, my perspective on the values of our community, especially in the wake of the 2023 referendum that failed and really supported largely by the survey results from the Morris Leatherman Company tonight, is that our community greatly values stability and predictability. They want to have some assurance that when they send their children to Rochester Public Schools and they select a program that makes sense for them, they choose a house in a neighborhood that is associated with a school, that that will be an enduring thing that they can count on in their lives as they plan their children's future. And I think our community, because I've had lots of conversations, our community is sophisticated enough to understand that stability requires a little bit of cushion. It requires a margin, because the future is unpredictable. We don't know right now when the next analog to a 30% increase in transportation costs might come or a significant increase in healthcare benefits might come. But I do think that our community understands what they're asking for when they say stability is one of their core values. And so I appreciate the listing of priorities that would be supported by the $1,133 per pupil unit. But I think the way that I will hope to examine the merits of this referendum proposal and that I'm sure our community will want to be able to analyze it is in the context of what they would be losing. And I would not expect, because stability is a core value of our community as it regards its school district, that that would necessarily, the amount of reductions would necessarily total $19.4 million. I think if we want to achieve stability and if we want to credibly tell our community that this is the educational structure that we're able to provide and that you can count on for the next decade, that the commensurate amount of reductions in the negative case would not necessarily equal that same amount. So I, maybe I'll stop there. But at what point do you anticipate providing some information on what the negative consequences of a failure to pass this referendum would be? Because I think that's a really critical way for our community to examine the merits here.
Yeah, Director Cook, I really thank you. Well, the total is in the memo, which is to say, we would face a $20 million deficit going into the 25-26 school year if we secure nothing. And as you will recall from our long-term financial projections, it actually potentially compounds from there. So that is the bumper sticker. But we learned in the last referendum, when we said repeatedly that if the last referendum failed, we would have to make $10 million in cuts, that was a very abstract figure to people. And so my first recommendation is for you to, as I know you know, approve this positive investment. But we also heard loud and clear from our community after the last referendum narrowly failed, you need to tell us what the consequences will be, what the reductions will be. And so before the start of the 2024-25 school year, I will bring to the board and the community a clearer sense of what those reductions will be. I very intentionally and not cavalierly mention school closing, class size increases, program reductions, and cuts to student services. And so those are the four broad categories that are outlined in the memo. But we will bring greater clarity. Now, understanding that ultimately, that was always, that will always be the decision of the school board, I will bring a general strategy that future boards will, of course, make decisions on as part of the budget process. But it's a critical point, and I think we heard that loud and clear. So before the start of the next school year, you know, we're on the cusp of summer and fall seems long away. And so there's a question of timing. When are people going to be able to digest this information? So if it seems prudent to do that sooner, we certainly could. But we'll definitely do it before the start of the next school year to really, to make very clear what the consequences of not passing. And I will just say too, Director Cook, your point about stability, I think, is a powerful one. And I saw, as I was coming in, there were a number of folks that I got to know through the difficulties of the plan that we had to propose after the referendum failed. And I went into their schools, and we had some very challenging meetings. And of course, those were always going to be challenging because they're about cuts in services to kids that we all value. What was, made them doubly difficult was the suddenness of them and the absence of giving staff and families time to plan. Now, that was because we thought we had to cut all of those dollars for the budget you're going to approve in two weeks. Had Mayo Clinic not stepped up and had you not authorized the use of reserves, which, again, I think is prudent but not sustainable, we'd be two weeks from a $19 million budget cut this year. And so this is a brief reprieve that we need to, I believe, take advantage of.
Having been in rooms, both before I was on the board and on the board, where lists like this were presented, and being here again, hearing that these are the things that we need additional funds to support, feeling again that we don't have the revenue to support them. It's heavy. I think people will see this list, and it'll be very heavy for a lot of people. It always is. But this is different than any other time we've had before, because we are seeing what we hope to invest in, and we have the opportunity to get the funds to invest. Not almost immediately, but relatively soon. It's not, the cycle isn't off. In the past, we've had to make reductions, and we haven't had the chance to go to the community or wait for the state government to give us additional funds. We're in sync with identifying our needs and with having the opportunity to go for a funding source that will meet those needs. But I think it's important to also reinforce that there are no other knights in shining armor coming. We're not going to be getting any additional funding from the state in a significant amount this year, because it's not a budget year, the supplemental budget. There's not going to be additional money. The first time we might see that would be for the 2026-27 school year. So if this referendum does not pass, So if this referendum does not pass, we would again be in a, in a cycle of not having the resources we need. So this is a unique opportunity in that we have been studying this for a long time. We have seen it on the horizon. We have attempted to take steps with the 2023 referendum to address it. And thanks to the Mayo Clinic for giving us that extra time to be able to come up with a longer term plan, and now we have it. So I, I too appreciate the specificity and the ability to have a conversation with our community about the consequences, but also about the action and the information and the questions that they could ask and the way that they can be involved in making a strong statement about what they want their schools to look like for our kids.
Observation? I see Jess typing away.
That's closed caption.
Okay, she's not typing. Never mind.
Well, board members, thank you. We will be presenting you with this item for action at the next meeting, and of course, then there are pending your decision, will be many further conversations going forward. But thank you for your attention. Peter, thank you for coming to Rochester for the analysis that you did. I hope now the through line from Peter's analysis to this proposal is the strong support for the educational substance of our work, which is there. And so that is at the core of this proposal. It is not requesting a general investment of nineteen point four million dollars. It's requesting support for the very things that Peter's survey showed people feel very positively and strongly about. And so, thank you, Adam Chair, for the time.
And at this time, we're going to take a ten minute recess to reset and give the superintendent a chance to have conversation. So we will reconvene at six fifty P M.
This item on our agenda is a focus topic, the world languages proposal. This is an information item. Superintendent, pick up.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I am hoping that Ms. Sam can help us bring up the first PowerPoint that we have.
Okay. And if it is there, great. So board members are aware that we have got wonderful world language programs, world language teachers in our school district. And my first year here, we encountered a really significant challenge. Enrollment in three of our programs in most of our high schools, German, French and Latin, had dipped to the point where we simply could not offer the classes in person. And so a recommendation was made to me, coming first from our high school principals and registrars, the people who build our schedules, to move those three languages entirely to online instruction. And so we've done that for the last couple of years, and the feedback that I've received and the times I've visited the language labs where those students are learning has really confirmed for me that that is not an optimal environment in which to learn a world language. It doesn't facilitate the, of course, facial expressions and body language, but it also doesn't build the relationships and give you the opportunity that great world language instruction includes. And so we wanted to convene a task force to take a look at, first of all, the critical issue of which languages are we offering in order to meet student demand. As we will hear in the presentation, the challenge that we saw in my first year here with enrollment in German, French and Latin, not so much Spanish, was not new to the school district. There was a sustained downward trend in student demand for those languages. And so we faced a question of how do we actually return to in-person language learning for many of our students for whom that mode is most effective? But then how do we actually go beyond that and also further strengthen the quality of instruction that students are receiving in world language? And so we asked Natalia Benjamin, our Director of Multi-Language Learning, to convene a working group to take a look at the state of world language instruction in Rochester Public Schools broadly. It is also important that as superintendent, I'm making decisions and recommendations that face the difficult issues. And so while the working group did reach some And so, while the working group did reach some conclusions that I'm sure we'll hear about regarding in-person language learning, they did not, nor did we push them to make a specific recommendation on the future of our world language offerings. And so, I'm sharing now, before we turn over to Natalia and the group for what I know is going to be a great discussion, my current thinking on our offerings around world language. And it's outlined on the slide that I'll turn to in just a moment. One important point for board members is that board members would usually approve our course offerings each year when we approve, when you approve, the course guide, the registration guide. I am not recommending any changes for the next two school years in order to allow students who are currently taking our languages to continue taking those languages. And so, you would not be approving a course guide for quite some time to make changes. So, my plan, and I'll be working with the Chair and Vice Chair on this, is that early in the fall, I would bring to you a recommendation for a resolution that has the board registering its direction on this issue, though the real moment of decision is each year when you approve the course guide for the following year. But I want to make sure that we're being transparent and that we're also giving students, families, and staff time to plan ahead. So, as you can see from the recommendation there, my recommendation will be to continue offering the world languages that have sufficient enrollment, not just this year, but over a sustained period of time, Spanish and French. Now, it's important to note that French in particular has not had the same level of enrollments in all schools. And so, when I talk about sufficient enrollment, it's in each school. We need to make sure we can offer that in-person instruction at Century, at John Marshall, at Mayo. The difficult reality is, after having had many conversations, I am going to recommend that we sunset Latin and German after two more years of language instruction. And that is a difficult, reluctant decision, but the sustained data suggests we just don't have the student interest to bring those classes back in person. I also will recommend that we begin offering a new language. And you'll see and hear about some of the possibilities that we learned about in a survey. And that we would spend time this summer, building upon what we heard from students this year around their interests, to really look at two critical things. The quality of available curricular resources and the availability of high-quality teachers to offer the instruction. Because we could get very excited about offering a new language, but if we can't find the teachers or curriculum to offer it, that would not be a good investment. In addition, while in-person world language learning is, I think, the preferred mode of instruction for the vast majority of students, for some students, online learning in world language works very well. And so, that we would begin to actually increase the number of different languages that we offer through a kind of an independent study structure offered through PSEO and potentially partnerships with other organizations. And so, we would certainly continue to offer those language, maybe German and Latin if students are interested, but we would be doing it in a kind of an independent study virtual setting. So, that is not before you tonight that I'm asking for action on. I certainly, I'm eager, have read in great detail the working group's conclusions. I'm eager for continued conversations. But I also know that if we continue to kind of stay at status quo, there's very little reason to believe that we will not have sustained drifting downward in certain percentages of students choosing languages. And that's going to bring us further from what I think is the goal, which is to bring back robust in-person opportunities to learn world languages in our schools. And so, I'm sure that subject will come up tonight, but it is by design that Natalia and I agreed that we would separate my recommendation from the working group's recommendations, understanding that I certainly saw much else in the recommendations to build upon in addition to the difficult decision that I do believe we need to make regarding some of our world language offerings. So, unless there are other discussions, Madam Chair, on that, since I'm not asking for action on that right now, I might suggest we turn to the working group and find out what they learned.
Please.
Okay. Thank you all for the work that you did to bring this together. It is an extraordinary document that goes very deep into a lot of things. I was telling Natalia, once upon a time, I actually was certified in the state of Massachusetts to teach Chinese. And I never did it, but I had appreciation of the complexity of teaching world language and how, in addition to opening doors to cultures and history and art, it's cognitively just great brain development. And so, I'm passionate about finding ways to grow this offering and look forward to finding ways to do more and do it better. So, we'll turn it over to you to jump in.
Buenas tardes. Nancy, this is Superintendent Patel. Board members and cabinet members, thanks for having us tonight. I'm going to allow everyone to just introduce themselves briefly under connection to our RPS before we begin our presentation.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Prow. I am an RPS parent. I have a elementary school child at Bramble Valley, two at Mayo High School, and two graduates from Mayo High School. I am also a community member, and I run an exchange organization that brings foreign students into RPS as well as send RPS students abroad in order to learn a new language, develop a good cultural understanding, and then come back into RPS and share their experience.
Hi, my name is Isaac Nelson. I'm a senior at John Marshall High School. I also go by Benois. It's my French name. I've been taking French there for four years now, and I'm very passionate about it. And I'm just happy to be a part of this board as we make some recommendations for the future of language in the district.
Hello, my name is Sophia Grivna. I'm a junior at Mayo High School, and I've been a part of the world language program. And I also did a foreign exchange program through which I became fluent in French.
Hello, my name is Jenny. My son, Royce, who's over there flopping around, is deaf, hard of hearing. He is reliant on a sign language interpreter for all academics, and I have had the privilege of seeing him interact with his peers who have started to learn sign languages as well. And so, as a part of our world language, I want to input the voice of my child and his peers into our work group.
Hello, my name is Rayland Bruick. I am a Spanish teacher at Century High School, and it is currently my third year in the district.
Ich heiße Christina Tietje. Ich komme aus Deutschland. Ich bin Anthropologin. Ich habe lange in Frankreich und in Mexiko gewohnt. Ich habe zwei Kinder in den Schulen hier. Und es liegt mir sehr am Herzen, dass sie andere Sprachen lernen können. Mein Name ist Christina Tietje. I'm originally from Germany. I also speak other languages because I have been a university professor in France and research in Mexico. And I have two children in the public school that are bilingual in German, but I would like them to be able to learn four foreign languages by the time they graduate high school, as I do, including Latin. And it would be wonderful if the public school could offer us.
Bonjour, je m'appelle Madame Atwood. Je suis prof de français. Rochester, le lycée, Century, aussi Mayo, et aussi John Marshall. So, I teach French at all three with RPS Online, but I have been at John Marshall the longest. This will be going into next year, ten years in the district.
Diane Wachyake, Amelia Cordell, Maquiapi, Rochester, Matoha. Sisaituan, Apaituan, Oyate, Erwati, Aina, Colleen, Ate, Chester. My name is Amelia Cordell. I'm a member of the system of Oyate. I am Dakota. And my mom's name is Colleen. My dad's name is Chester. And I'm here for the Indigenous Voice and because we have things from the state that are kind of forcing us to move things along. And I'm here to make sure that we do that.
Thanks, everyone, for introducing yourselves. As you can see, we have a diverse group of people who participated, and I'm just very excited to share our findings today. So, we'll share the purpose of the group and what guided our work, as well. Dr. Patel already shared the administrative recommendations, and we'll share the process and the research we did, as well as the community input and findings that we have. So, we started with three questions. First off, what is the optimal world language opportunities and experiences students need to have access to? And then, looking at who is taking those classes, and does that represent our community members? And lastly, what should the language experience feel and look like? And so, with that, I'll pass it on to you.
Okay. We wanted to share briefly the process that we went through as the world articulation team. We met five times over five months. Some people were able to attend the meeting, some people were not able to attend the meeting. However, every member that did attend or voiced their input, they were able to contribute and be heard, and that is what you're going to hear today. During our first meeting, we established the purpose of our team, and we really took some time to generate some ideas that we had, and we wanted to develop some themes. So, based on all those ideas, we came up with eight different themes, and we split off into eight different groups so we could research those themes. We developed surveys, and we gathered the information. We analyzed the findings from that research and that data. And finally, we provided recommendations to the board.
So, these are the themes we're going to present to you today. We did consolidate some of them, and so, that's what we'll share today.
So, for the first category on class offerings and access, there were three main subcategories that were consolidated here. The first one being a desire to have a broader range of language offerings. And as the administrative board found their purpose with this, they said that first, we should keep the languages that have consistent enrollment or are increasing in enrollment. And for example, Spanish, which is increasing in enrollment, would be kept along with French, which has rebounded this past year. And then, others may be eliminated based on their enrollment. But there are several that we need to keep in mind here with some global trends and community trends, like which languages, in terms of class offerings, the community really prioritizes. A second one would be the importance of language learning at an earlier stage, especially in middle school, to get students interested in that. And especially because other districts that are similar in size have done the same thing that they have included in courses in middle school. And finally, although our survey results did not necessarily at all try to elicit this response, it is what more or less the committee assumed would be the response, that a lot of respondents, including students, parents, and community members, wanted that in-person instruction, which Dr. Patel emphasized. And for a personal anecdote, I would say that it has worked better for me, and I prefer it very much. But according to a lot of the qualitative data that this survey found, that would be the main focus of this report. And based on this graph here, we have to consider not only the enrollment trends, but also the survey results, which indicated preference for bringing back some languages that have been offered in past years in the Rochester Public School District, including Mandarin and ASL. And so, these show that some of the languages have been declining in enrollment and others have been flatlining in a way. And so, that should guide our policy here.
Some of our survey results enforced what we already kind of knew and gave us a new look at where we could maybe take our world languages. The survey was for parents and students. As you can see, both parents and students highly saw Spanish as a very important offering, followed closely by ASL, American Sign Language. The school district has 90-plus languages that are spoken at home amongst our students. And it would be impossible to offer all of that. But to broaden our offerings would be a great expansion to our programs and would meet the wants and needs of both parents and students. I think it's no surprise to us that the majority of our student population is of Caucasian descent, but of course, we are also a very diverse community. And so, when looking at the demographics overall, the numbers for the minority students, they show... Sorry, it's been a long day.
It's a significant share of our district, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would just add, when you look at this, you can see that this is the student enrollment data, and so, it mirrors a lot of what our normal community members and student body reflects. And so, when we look at the offerings overall, the enrollment for all of those languages mirror our student body population.
So, our first recommendation is to work on communication so that parents and caregivers can, and students can be better informed. So, across every single thing that we were talking about, communication was at the core. Students, caregivers, and parents feel like they do not have enough information prior to registering for world language classes. So, that's in eighth grade when they're given the information, the counselors are going in. And I've been in those classrooms. I taught in a middle school last year. It is a whirlwind. The students, counselors try their best, the students have no idea what they're doing for the most part. Additionally, parents, caregivers, and students want to have more information on how their students can attain credit outside of RPS. So, that might be some of those independent studies or working with other organizations such as Tiffany's where it's the exchange program. And then, finally, having an area for engagement for community events and cultural events within Rochester. For example, this is my third year teaching in the district. I've taught Spanish for three years. I had no idea that there was a Spanish group that met legally in Rochester. And it's only through this group that I, through our group, that I found out about that.
We also worked on program evaluation. So, we were kind of looking at what the guidelines are. And in discussing wanting to expand the current language offerings, not wanting to take any away, however, we felt that some languages that may be able to be offered through maybe independent credit or something else would maybe not fit with the evaluation that is current in existence. And we therefore would suggest to develop some kind of outcome-based approach that are kind of targeted depending on what language you're talking about. So, we would want to have feedback from the teachers that teach these languages, also from students and parents. We do think that one should look at the curriculum in order to be able to look at what program evaluation we want to do, because we are not all language teachers in the district, so we didn't all have the knowledge of what the curriculum is. I only see it secondhand through my own children. And certainly, there could be probably changes made to the curriculum in addition to putting languages back in the classroom with a teacher that currently are not. And with that, because we are thinking about world languages, we think that the emphasis in the curriculum should be, of course, on learning grammar and vocabulary, but really on developing the conversational skills. We want to raise global citizens, and teaching a world language that is in a live language, such as French or German or Spanish or Mandarin, really conversational skills are very important so they can travel, they can participate when they are in a workforce where they have to interact with people from multiple countries, and it's very common these days, and really all parts, I think. So, conversational skills should be a high priority. Students should be able to speak and give presentations in the language even by the end of the first year, as it was in my upbringing when I learned a foreign language in a public school system in a different country. And the other part that is imparted in these languages is cultural awareness. So, of course, learning a language, and there I speak as a cultural anthropologist, gives you the window into the culture. Because people, you don't just literally translate something, but you feel differently and you speak differently about something just because it's part of the culture that is conceptualized in a different way. So, we would like to have the teachers continue. So we would like to have the teachers continue with this type of cultural awareness, where they talk about the culture or cultures, because Spanish is not only spoken in one country, or nor is French or German, for that matter. And so that would be something that we would want to see in the curriculum and also be able to evaluate it through this outcome-based program evaluation that we think should be developed. And there are proficiency guidelines by the American Council on Teaching Foreign Languages that of course we would work with. But again, depending on the languages that the school district would adopt as part of their learning, we would want to cater that a little bit.
If I'm not loud enough, just let me know. I'm gonna break out the teacher voice. So the next part is talking about supports and resources. So as a foreign language teacher, like really honestly, even when I began in the district, I don't know that I would have done so well if I didn't have the support of my colleagues to be able to get where I am today and have them share resources. Because when I was a new teacher, I was like, "I gotta make everything!" "Oh, my God!" No, do not recreate the wheel. So that is one of our recommendations, is that we need mentors. We need people to help us out. And it's so much more work, because all of us have so many things on there. So it'd be nice to have somebody mentor that we could have time to actually meet with them, especially new teachers. And because of the teacher shortage all across here, and especially because languages are being cut more and more out of universities, we want to also be able to welcome community members who may be fluent in the language and be able to get them in there and get them in the classroom. But they need support too, because knowing a language and teaching a language are not the same thing. And that's hard, because when they come in, there is one thing, to know the language, then try to teach the kids that, especially high schoolers, as that's who I teach. And they're like, "What?" You know, I say "Bonjour" to them, and they're like, "What?" They're like, "Hello." So, so not even just that, because some people who come in might also, that might be their first language. So to support them, not only in their language, but also in being able to instruct in both. And also for us teachers, we definitely need the time and the resources for PD and stuff to be able to keep up with current curriculum, keep up with the best practices. Because as Christina was saying, like, we are all about culture and there's conversation. And it's been very hard to keep that up, because it changes. And she is right. I mean, it's not just one country that speaks one language, we have a bunch. And in fact, as Christina said, in Europe, they're expected to know quite a few languages already. And here in America, it's one. And most of them say "Bonjour" or "Hola," or that's it. And they're like, "That's all I remember from high school." Or the parents I get, be like, "I got ça va." So that is our recommendation, is that we would like to be able to keep our stuff up to date as well as mentor others.
The next part, our students were an integral part of the team, and I was really excited to hear their voices. And so they were some of the most important pieces in this area.
Student engagement and support in language instruction could be expanded on beyond the classroom walls. One recommendation is to provide more leadership opportunities for students. In order to do this, we would need to facilitate connections with student-ruled organizations, clubs, and honor societies so that students feel they have the resources and support systems in place to uphold these organizations. We would also like to connect to wider language communities in Rochester to come together and organize events focused on language and culture. Another recommendation is to provide language exploration at younger ages. We would like to create mentorship programs and connections between high school students in their organizations with younger kids who are interested in learning languages.
And to piggyback off of that, so in the past, something that we've done pre-pandemic was, there was a French club at Washington Elementary, where the kids learned very basic numbers and hello and colors. And I had some of my French fours who would go out there, and they would spend their time. And it was such a great opportunity for them to connect with the younger levels. And also, we've always had some kind of club, whether it be French club, Spanish club, whatever. But to include the community in it would also build a greater, like, they would be more interested and able to do the languages. And the sooner the better, as children pick up language faster when they're in high school, when they're, you know, taking AP tests.
Okay, so the topic of high school credit attainment and post-secondary opportunities brought to light the need to review the credit by assessment test on language and culture to reflect language-specific performances. There are many different dialects and regional specifications for each language and culture, which is not being accurately reflected in the current evaluation system. Many students grow up speaking regional dialects of a language, which unfortunately puts them at a major disadvantage when trying to obtain credit for a language in which they are fluent.
Another recommendation we have is to review policies, such as Policy 620, to support attainment of credits related to language proficiency at the high school credit level and to review their implementation to ensure fidelity across high schools. And at the moment, Policy 620, from what I read on it, mostly encompasses credit by assessment exams at the moment, which Sophia talked about. However, there have been some inconsistencies that this, and it might be beneficial for this policy to also include credit, to ensure credit for some other exams, such as the bilingual SEALs test that is administered by Minnesota. And some, any other things, including AP equivalencies.
So the seventh group was the community engagement and partnerships. Rochester, as we all know, has a very vibrant and diverse language community. And this includes several organizations that can support the recommendations that we're presenting to the board. RPS currently has 12 different exchange organizations that come in and use RPS. Eleven of those are solely high school organizations. And one is a high school organization, as well as provides exchanges for children in elementary and middle school. But beyond that exchange program or opportunities, we have many organizations here that focus on language development, that focus on conversation, that focus on culture. And we just need to figure out how to get that, to get this known. You had a teacher here that didn't know about a Spanish conversation group. I mean, amazing that it's there. We have a French conversation group and a German conversation group. We have groups that have Korean summer camps and teach Hindu and, or Hindi, and teach Mandarin. There's a lot of amazing resources here. So we recommend that we look for creating formal partnerships with many of these interested organizations and really open up the dialogue and have a two-way communication so that we can match people and children and families that are interested in these opportunities with organizations that are more than willing to help.
I would just add to that part that to support the students who are taking the bilingual SEALs, to be able to have that two-way communication with these organizations, but support the students. These organizations may not know what the SEAL is or how it is or what the assessment is about. And so being able to develop those partnerships would allow for that opportunity to be more available for our students.
Representing the 1% over here. I'll take it. Small but mighty. As we know, from all of our APAC updates, American Native Ed updates, we do have some statutes coming down on us about incorporating an Indigenous culture and language course, since we do have over 100 Indigenous students in the district. So we did apply for a grant, the revitalization grant through MDE. They're still in the process, we haven't heard back yet. But even today, we met with 13 community members and teachers, high school teachers, about this course, starting the curriculum process, but really just getting our teachers kind of jazzed about it and having them speak Dakota, learn Dakota. But a lot of the, they're intertwined. You can't have the culture class without the language, and we can't have the language without the culture. Because even just like my introduction, like your introduction is a huge part, because I told you who I am, I told you who I belong to, I told you where I'm from. The only thing that I didn't tell you is what are my dreams? Once you can answer those four things, that's how you know you were solid in your identity. So even just that introduction in Dakota, you learn so much about a person. But having that language and that culture in the class is what we're kind of getting our students and our teachers excited about. We do have it in the register for next year. Hopefully, get at least one pilot class going, at least give teachers some tools as well, until we hear back from MDE. We did get the Minneapolis Foundation Grant to get some of those materials. We had APAC members there this morning, helping with the planning and the curriculum. And just working on training this June, and just collaborating. We don't really have a Dakota language instructor yet, but I am into Dakota language courses, I know the materials, I know who to go to. So we have people that we can turn to, until we can hopefully get somebody down here in Rochester to help us out. So it's in the works very heavily, and I'm excited about where it's gonna go. We did, I decided that we're gonna do Dakota, just because between Dakota and Anishinaabe, Dakota is more on the, first of all, we're on Dakota land, but it's also the language that needs more support from non-Indigenous people to revitalize it as well. Thank you.
So as you can see, there's a lot of things that were going on. There was a lot of research, lots of really exciting conversations and lots of recommendations. And so I tried to summarize these in four main points. The first one, really looking this summer at the resources, both like curriculum and also teachers, to be able to identify the language that we could propose to add in a couple of years. And then the second part was really centering that student voice, to be able to provide students with the opportunity to engage with themselves, but also with other students in the district. And then third, developing that communication. Communication came up in every, every, every theme that we talked about. And so not only communicating with families and students so that they understand what the programming is, but also the opportunities that they can have to access language opportunities, and also with our community organizations, so that we can have that coherence across, not just only K-12, but with our community members. And then last but not least, working with our world language teachers, our parents and our students, to really develop a process for that program evaluation so that we can share with our community, what are we able to do in that our curriculum, right, is sound, that our students can perform at high levels, and that our teachers have the resources that they need. So with that, what questions do you have for us?
Excuse me. Actually, I'd like to start with Christine. Is it, you mentioned the lovely thought of the possibility of RPS graduates becoming fluent in four languages by the time they graduate. It is, I recognize that we currently offer four languages. Is it possible to take multiple languages currently?
I can answer that. Sure. I'll just do it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so she is, she studied abroad in France, stayed in Germany. Actually, most of my children do that. And so she had the opportunity to take honors Spanish III as a seventh grader. And then in her ninth grade year, she took Spanish IV and French Latin I. And then she's now a sophomore, and she's taking, gosh, she just goes up. So she's Latin II, and then she'll have the opportunity, because she did credit through assessment, so she has I and II's in the various languages. So she can come in and she can take honors III and IV in all the languages, which gave her the opportunity to take Latin, which was important to her because she wanted to know the root basis of the language. But it's very tricky. It would be great, but it's extremely tricky, and you have to think ahead. And you have to have some foundation.
And am I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, could I, maybe I could offer a perspective of how it is done in European schools? And we've talked about this in our, you know, in our meetings, different tables, I believe, at different times, that we would prefer if a language could be introduced earlier than in high school. And that would be really the only way to have at least two languages. So when I grew up in Germany, I started English at age 11. And now, because of my background as an anthropologist, you may all know that if you don't learn a foreign language by the age of 13 or 14, you will never lose your accent. So introducing a foreign language at age 11 or maybe 10 is very helpful if you would like to have someone akin to a native speaker. Now, again, this would mean that the teachers in this district would have to have absolutely no accent. And from what I hear from my own students, unfortunately, that is not always the case. But sometimes it is, so especially for Spanish. So 10 or 11, you start the first language, you do that for two years. It's often English in Europe, in Germany and other countries. Sometimes they start in third grade. Now with so many immigrants, they have gone back to pushing it back to fifth grade, because they say they need to learn, everybody needs to learn German or Danish or whatever they need to learn in the country. So if one was to introduce as was, you know, at some point, there was some Spanish. When my kids were at Fidel, there was some Spanish. Maybe it was just one semester, it was certainly not. Yeah. So it should have been every day for two years straight, and they would have had a basic of Spanish. And then by the time they go to high school, they could continue and be in Spanish III, and then start French or German or whatever, Latin or Mandarin I. Now, with the ways that the electives are done and the requirements in this district, there would have to be some fiddling with that a little bit to allow a student to also add a third language. Now, in my high school upbringing, yes, I did Latin for four years. I did English for seven or so, and I did French for six. And, you know, and I picked up Spanish later along the way. But there was also Italian and ancient Greek and other things. So you could choose by ninth grade, that was my, you know, third language, I guess, Latin. I was able to finish a latinum, which if you go to medical school or if you want to study philosophy, you want to have a grecum, Greek, ancient Greek. In medical school, you want to have the latinum. So I was able to do four years of Latin and have that had I wanted to go to medical school. So, but I also, you know, had French and English, and I was perfectly, we had to analyze literature, just like my daughter in English honors right now as a freshman, has to analyze Romeo and Juliet in English, right? So we had to do that, you know, as a German person in English. At some point, after five years or four years, we had to analyze Shakespeare in English, writing essays, you know, 15 pages or whatever. So same in French. So if you start earlier, you can add another language, because, and you don't have to pay a lot of money to go abroad, not everybody can afford that. Not everybody will want to do these two languages. But again, we talked about introducing some kind of world language sneak peek in elementary schools and say, "Hey, these are the languages that people speak around the world." Maybe your grandma was German or Dakota or whatever, you know? And this is, they're just a few little words, you know, mama and papa, whatever they do. My kids were in Montessori for preschool, so they did the whole thing in Spanish there, you know, for preschool. So anyway, but, so there are possibilities, but of course, there's a lack of funding, you know? But something to think about in what you want to offer in this very diverse community, with a lot of people from all over the world, where some kids are indeed bilingual, but they may not have the writing capacity or being able to do the grammar tests, although my daughter just tested out, when he helped me find her, by the way, because she was up in the room. I don't know if you remember.
That's right.
She was taking German I, II, and III, and she was in there for like three hours. And I was like, "Where is my kid?" So yes, she successfully completed that, and is gonna try to do that for number four. And then would of course like to do a higher level, maybe AP or something, where she can actually learn how to write 15-page essays in German, you know? Because as someone growing up here bilingual, she has not learned how to do that yet. So anyway, so I think that's something we have discussed. This is not part of our, you know, presentation, because we digested it and made it very, very tiny for you. But these are all things we would love to see.
What I would add is that we really need to look at the structures that are in place to support language acquisition. And so when we're thinking, what can we provide as we collaborate with other organizations? What can our students have access to? We don't have the capacity to have immersion programs in every one of our elementary schools. But can we provide collaboration for after-school and before-school programs that can add that foundational skill? So that by the time they come to the middle school or the high school, they're beyond those basic skills that they need. That would be one thought. I think the other thought is, as we're looking at collaborating with other educational institutions that allow access to other languages that we may not be able to access in person, that's accessible, right, for middle school students? That can be accessible for any student that wishes to continue that. And building up on the diverse population that we already have. And so those students who already have I, II languages, how can we support that so that they can maintain those languages and then add other languages as they seek other opportunities? and then add other languages as they seek other opportunities?
So, wow, that really, I think, a wonderful kind of aspirational vision of a way that we could incorporate deeper learning into accessing culture through language and that, that's all really helpful. I guess, I'll just, the, the thought that I was trying to get to here, and let me see if I can distill it into a question. I, I think I remember that around 30% of students are taking some foreign language in high school and it drops off sharply after the first two years, which sort of makes sense given like University of Minnesota's admission requirements and so forth. But as we look at the potential or considering the recommendation to sunset the German and Latin offerings, for example, and then also the possibility of adding another language, is our, is our, I, I'm, I'm just wondering kind of your reaction to the idea that would we lose some students who are currently studying foreign language, like German or Latin? That would, do we think that they would likely find a home in French or Spanish? Or that, or whatever the third language is? And do we think that offering a third language might increase the number of students that are able to explore foreign language, whether it's ASL or Arabic or Japanese or whatever, kind of like we thought would capture those passions? I, that didn't really lend itself very well to a question.
No, but I think, I think I can answer your non-question.
Okay.
So I, I have two thoughts. In your report on page 21, we did ask the question, why is the biggest reason why a student chooses to take a foreign language? And we have answers from both parents and students. Effective communication is number one, and then college admission, and then is the second one. A lot of universities are moving away from requiring a language, but many ask for at least two years. And so that is one of the reasons why we hypothesize we see that drop after two years. I think the other piece is looking at how our students are interacting, right? Are we focusing on learning about the language or are we focusing on learning the language itself? And so I think as we move towards more communicative approaches, less like drilling on the grammar and the vocabulary, I think our students will be more engaged and will be more willing to stay longer, so to speak. The other one that I would love to, that I would point out to is, is a survey that we asked students, what languages are you interested in? Parents and students mirror a lot of their choices as far as that concerns. There's many students who don't take a language because the choices that are there don't match their interests. And so I think it's, it's a balancing act on how can we meet our students within-person needs, right? Can we pick the three magic languages that will call their attention? And increasing the availability and opportunities to learn other languages. One example is Winona offers Mandarin Chinese through P S E O. Can we partner so that we have all of these options? So that our students are not confined just to the three in-person options or four in-person options that we currently have? And so I think there's a lot of potential when it comes to partnering with organizations who have high-quality instruction when it comes to foreign languages. And I think that would increase the number of students that are taking my language because it appeals to their interests.
If I can piggy, I'm sorry, if I can piggyback off of your first point specifically, as speakers of English, who can tell me what a present participle is? Past participle, like a runt. These are things that, these are grammar points that students are learning, especially in Spanish, that they are learning in Spanish I. And through our current curriculum, that is the main focus. It is the grammar and then the vocabulary. And so the communicative competencies that Natalia is talking about is listening, speaking, reading and writing. And if that's not the main focus of our classroom and the curriculum within our classrooms, how can we prepare students to be global citizens where they have cultural awareness, where they have empathy? If they are just learning how to analyze a, a language and not learning how to use it? And then with that, I'm sorry, more with taking away the, the stuff that weighs students down, all these grammar rules, when you take them out of that experience where they get to speak with other people, that's where the excitement is. That's where their engagement is. And so we would hope that with the transition to more communicative competencies, that there would be more engagement and more excitement for students to be able to take those classes because we're not just drilling them with grammar.
Can I add to this?
Keep going, because I got stuff to.
So two things I wanna speak to, two points. One about the enrollment drop that you see in the survey. The word on the street around Rochester is French is gonna go, not online or maybe some other ones. So who knows? The other word on the street when my son, who's an eighth grader, had to sign up for high school was, well, if they're all online, French or German or Latin, well, then I'm just gonna go with Spanish because why do anything online? So you see a high enrollment in Spanish that is even higher and a drop in the other ones since they have become online. You may reverse that if you offer them again in person, including German, which is a spoken language. There are different countries in Europe speaking a version of German. Latin is a dead language. Again, it's a very, very beneficial language if you want to do anything in science or if you're into romance languages or countries that speak it, you can quickly, quickly learn it and just communicate. But not every, it may not be what everybody wants to do. But, so that is just about the online enrollment, online class and enrollment drop in some of these languages. It may be reversed if they're now being offered in person again. And with that, again, is this early introduction to the foreign language. So there's only an early introduction to Spanish or was at some point in middle school. And then it kind of wasn't. But these kids that have just now enrolled, they have had that in fifth or sixth grade. The other thing that is very interesting that you mentioned this, I, you know, as a, as a seventh grader, I was teaching English, you know, to younger kids in my hometown for my afternoon job. It was a good paying job. A tutor, you would tell, you would call it. And then when I was a student in France, I was teaching both German or English, you know, as a tutor to make some money as an undergrad. And when I came as a French exchange student to an American university during my undergraduate years, I was a French conversation teacher in the French department. And I also taught ESL to Asian students in Oregon. So there's something about conversation that is key, but there's also something about knowing the grammar of your own language when you want to teach another language. So as I have struggled to teach my kids the idea of German grammar, yeah, they can speak it, right, but they have to take these tests. So, I mean, a credit by assessment. I was like, wow, this is very interesting that you don't even know the basic grammatical terms in English. So what are you doing in elementary school? I mean, I asked them that when they were in third grade and they could not have it at all. But, so I think that is, that is something that if one looks at the curriculum for elementary kids for English, you know, they need to learn how to read and they need to learn how to write, and they need to learn what a verb is. And they do, they learn what a verb is and an adjective and all these different things. But once you get to teaching a foreign language, you really need to learn many more things in the grammatical vocabulary, just the technical vocabulary of grammar. Otherwise, as a language teacher, suddenly having to talk about these conditional tenses, tu es gentil, you know? So all this stuff. It's, it's really difficult and, and kids lose interest because they don't even know it in their own language. That's just, you know, to piggyback on yourself.
Well, I just wanted to add to answer your question. So what I've seen since I've been in the district almost 10 years is I always did see the drop-off after level two. But at the same time, it was always great to watch my threes and my fours become this tight-knit group. And we would have so much more fun because then everybody was focused and we could just do. And I don't always focus on just grammar or anything like that. I, I do a lot of games, so they tend to like those. Those two can attest to. So I think it's just, if you, it's also the teacher who is also part of the reason some stick by. Because I've had students who are not perfect at the language by any means or really struggle, but they stuck by because they're like, this is fun, I wanna keep going. And they put in their best foot forward. So I think with that also, having the instruction and doing conversational skills, cultural things and doing different things to engage them, we could definitely keep them going forward.
So I think to summarize those thoughts, the language learning environment is important. And really looking at the trend over the past five years gives you a good picture of what's going on, not just right, this online versus in-person over the past two years, but really looking at that trend data over the past five years.
I, I don't wanna introduce a difficult concept, but especially given the conversation that we had, the agenda item prior to this one. But one of the things I've heard multiple places is start earlier, expose to languages. And I know that the direction you're going with your recommendations is to consider a third language. But what is the trade-off with investing? And maybe the, the dollars aren't one-to-one, but what's the trade-off of investing our resources in earlier exposure to language instead of having more, more language opportunities at high school? I know we want to give our kids the choice, but if, I, I don't know what it shows that starting in middle school gives you more of a benefit to being able to be fluent in a language by the time you graduate or that you will continue to, to study it after high school. And the cost might not be equivalent, right? The cost of, of funding a high school language teacher versus exposure for, you know, our elementary and middle school students. But did you have that conversation at all?
We don't budget numbers, but I think that's why that collaboration with our community partners is so important. Because like I said, it's unrealistic to think we're gonna start different immersion programs in every one of our elementary school. And yet you have multilingual speakers in every elementary school. And so I can think of two things. One is those partnerships with community organizations and between high schoolers and younger kids can, can be that bridge. Because I don't, I don't think we're gonna start new immersion programs across the board. My second thought is also the work that we're doing with translinguaging with our multilingual learning department. Because that will offer that opportunity to normalize that language across all students in our schools. And that will open the door to more curiosity and more interest for those students.
A small comment. I'd like to just say that this was a world language team, not a foreign language team. As obviously the big supporter of American Sign Language, that is a language that does not have an accent, that does not have written requirements. So students who have fine motor skills issues, like my child, who cannot write, that's not a requirement for this class. Students who cannot roll their Rs, such as myself, I took German in high school. I can't roll my R. Spanish would have been very difficult for me. Guess what? You don't have to worry about that stuff when you use American Sign Language. I always, part of it too, for any of the languages, is what is the career opportunity? There are so many paths that students who take American Sign Language can do that are in desperate need of people. Interpreters for every language, as someone who works at Mayo Clinic, but sign language interpreters. Even in our school, my child has not had his sign language interpreter one day a week for multiple weeks. So interpreters, teaching, we have deaf and hard hearing base programs in, in elementary, middle and high school. Those teachers aren't fluent in ASL. They have to learn to communicate with my child. So there are so many other benefits to world languages, not just foreign languages, including our American Sign Language. And I will step off my soapbox.
I, I just wanna echo the thanks to all of you. There's a ton to think through. I also wanna add that next year we will be redesigning our registration process because the impact on world language is not unique. That we do not have intentional ways to gauge students starting in middle school and all through high school in making smart decisions about courses. The intensity of the dialogue kids have, the frequency and the timing are all inadequate to have students taking increasing ownership of their own education as they move through middle and high school. And so it's gonna be complex because right now we don't allocate time or staff to a high-quality discussion about what classes I'm, I'm gonna take. But that is a tremendous leverage, lever to increase students' awareness of world language. And so it's one of the things that we'll be putting in place next year. It's something we thought about getting done this year and it, it, we, we defined the problem but didn't begin to solve it. And so that's gonna be a high priority for next year. So I'm glad the registration process came out in your discussions because it is a potentially very, very high-impact opportunity to strengthen student experience in our secondary schools. So that'll be moving forward. And we will keep this prominently in mind and all of your recommendations as you're doing it. So thank you again so much, Maura.
Thank you for your time and for coming and sharing.
Thanks especially to the students, your voices are loud.
Our next agenda item is 5.1 closed session labor negotiation. The next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 13 D O 5 subdivision 3D, which allows the board to go in the closed session pursuant to labor negotiation strategy. Closed session will be convened immediately following passage of the motion in the essence of the building main floor and conference room. Pursuant to the law cited, will someone make a motion to go into closed session?
It's not moved.
It has been moved and seconded to go into closed session. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
Aye.
I think she said aye.
Speaker Morgan?
Aye.
Chair Nathan?
Aye.
Question mark?
Aye.
The board moves to the closed session at 7:56 PM. The board moves to the closed session at 7:56 p.m.
Acting Board Clerk?
Yes, that would be lovely.
Good thing we didn't expect you to be very dramatic.
You have to act.
It's cooler in here, that's for sure.
Hey, cooler in here. There's not the fine tuning of the temperature.
It's in my veins. They, they had a plan in communications to redo all of this, to update it, and I said, "Let's wait till after the referendum."
Oh, yeah. So do we do our cameras and stuff?
No, the graphics and pictures.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Update it, refresh it.
We like the strategic play back there though.
Yeah, not that. They did that, no, like this stuff.
Aw.
We might not have your picture with Brendan Casillas. I don't know. I don't know what their plan was. I just said, "Let's wait." Hmm, they have been thinking about another logo, but this was, I think, I don't know, Lori was kind of, she's confident a little bit. She might go more.
Well, we definitely need new pictures because I think they've all had children.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I said...
Grandchildren.
Justice here.
Are you ready?
Okay. The board's return to regular meeting at eight forty, eight thirty eight PM. Director Cook, could you read the list of people present in the closed session?
Kathy Nathan, Chair, Justin Cook on the school board, Lori Sam, Assistant School Board Clerk, Jess Garcia, school board, Kent Pikel, Superintendent, Jean Marvin, school board, Julie Workman, school board, Carl Bachan, Human Resources, and John Edison, District Counselor.
Item five point two is board questions and responses. There were no questions submitted before the meeting. Item five point three is our annual board calendar draft. Are there any items a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on a future agenda? Hearing none, we have upcoming board meetings on May twenty first, which is a regular meeting, June fourth, a regular meeting, June eleventh, a study session, and June eighteenth, a regular meeting, all starting at five thirty PM. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at eight thirty nine PM. no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:39 PM.